Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the back wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. We'll begin with the agenda for the -- well, actually, we'll do a presentation. First, is everybody here for the presentation? Is John here yet? Collins?
Oh, my.
So if it's okay, we'll go into the Board of Commissioners. We'll do the presentation, and then we'll go back to the agenda for the Board of Equalization. Roll call for the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. And the one recognition proclamation we have today is recognition of Sheriff Employee Security Supervisor Mr. John Collins retiring from Douglas County. And I would ask that John and his wife and people from the sheriff's office, please come forward, and I'll read the resolution. Whereas John Collins was hired as the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Building Security Officer on February 17, 2004, and whereas Douglas County recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to our residents, and whereas the county wishes to recognize John Collins of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office on his retirement and for his dedicated service of 12 years and 10 months to Douglas County, and whereas John will be greatly missed by his coworkers, friends, and friends in Douglas County government. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to John Collins for his 12 years, 10 months of dedicated service to Douglas County government and to the public he served, and this board further expresses its best wishes in all of his future endeavors dated this 20th day of December 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Sheriff?
As you mentioned, John has been with the Building Security Division for 12 years and 10 months. He was hired on February 17, 2004, and was promoted to Building Security Supervisor in February of 2005. Since that time, John has been an invaluable asset to the Building Security Division and is well-known all around the civic center and the Hall of Justice. John's presence will be sorely missed. It should be noted that John was no stranger to public service. Even prior to being hired with the sheriff's office, John is a Marine Corps combat veteran and served as a police officer in Michigan for several years. While serving as a Michigan police officer, John became an accomplished diver. He left police work for a calling to the seminary, and he became a church pastor. Even after returning to public service, John has continued on his path as the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Chaplain and continues his involvement with the Omaha Police Chaplain Corps. Thankfully for the citizens of Douglas County, this is a duty that John plans to continue in his retirement. And he told me that even though he lives in Iowa, he voted for Mike Boyle in the last poll.
Thank you for your recognition, and I am very grateful to the Sheriff's Department. I was a senior pastor of Center Baptist Church here in Omaha for 15 years, and then I resigned from the church. I went looking for other employment, and I was very grateful for the Sheriff's Department to hire me in this position, and will always be grateful for that opportunity. And my wife is with me. Her name is Judy, and we still have a family in the immediate area and enjoy that, and we will continue. In fact, at one time, I had a church offer to go and pastor another church, but it was way other town, miles away from here, and she said, "No, our family's here. We're staying here, and we will remain in Omaha." And we have enjoyed living in Omaha for 28 years now. So thank you for the recognition and the opportunity. May God bless each of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service, and if I could get everybody to vote, and then we'll ask that you come by and we'll give you the resolution.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
No, we already have a motion.
Yeah, okay.
Still need Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft. Motion passes.
I just wanted to add one thing on a -- Different topic while you're here. Tim Dempsey passed away, and I know that he was stalwart and a great contribution to the Sheriff's Department. I just wanted to take some notice and extend our condolences to his family and to the sheriff's office family. Tim did a great job for a great many years in law enforcement, very distinguished career, and I served with him on the Sheriff's Merit Commission most recently, and he will be missed.
Absolutely. His services this afternoon, and I will pass that on to his family.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we will recess out of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Is there a motion?
No.
Please vote. Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 13, 2016, and Item B, call for a meeting instead Tuesday, January 10, 2017, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, I mean, motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have two resolutions. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions and adjourn?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. No questions or comments. Please vote. The agenda for the Douglas County Commissioners. We'll go back into that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 13, 2016, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 20, 2016. Is there a motion? Oh, and can we wait one second? There's also approval of a resolution authorizing the clerk comptroller to make certain payments while the board is adjourned. So can the motion be to approve A, B, and C?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'd have to take some items separate if we --
Yes, I would mark me as yes on A and C, I believe. I'll abstain on B.
Okay. Well.
We are ready.
Well, you can, you just want to abstain on all three.
Okay.
All right. Motion passes.
Consent agenda, items A through P, and please note O, 3, has been taken off the agenda for now. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
More for information than anything else, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. On item F, Mr. Lorenz, we're executing the investment management agreement between Aristotle Capital Management, LLP, in Douglas County, as requested by the Retirement Committee. Just briefly outline for us what that does.
Well, this is just changing the manager of the large caps. We had a manager who was underperforming, so we had our consultant, Asset Consulting Group, bring in about three or four different active managers for large caps, and we reviewed them, and the Retirement Committee decided to select Aristotle. So this is just replacing a underperforming manager.
And how would Aristotle be compensated for their services?
I think they receive a fee that's about 0.7% of assets.
Can you estimate what that fee would be?
I think if they have about $10 million, that would be like $70,000.
And is this an annually renewed agreement?
No, I think it lasts until we terminate.
It lasts, is this an open-ended agreement?
Yeah, I mean, they're our investment manager. I mean, it's just, if you think about your own personal portfolio, do you review your investment manager annually?
Daily.
But, I mean, do you get a, I know we all do, but do you, but it's the same thing. You don't get a formal renewal document. It's kind of term, it's at will.
And the previous manager, the one that Aristotle is replacing, how long have they been?
We had had them for about five years, and then we terminated them at will.
Very good. And that option would be available to us under this agreement?
Yes, yes. All investment managers, I think, are on 30-day notice.
I have just questions on a couple of other items that I just go through real quickly here. On G, execute the actuarial services agreement between Silverstone Group, Inc., a Nebraska corporation, and Douglas County, Nebraska, as requested by the Retirement Committee. Could you outline for us, Joe, what that does?
That Silverstone is our actuary for the pension plan, and that, we do have like a five-year agreement, and that agreement was up, and this is just a renewal with Silverstone, who has been our actuary for a number of years on the pension plan and does a good job for us.
And how are they compensated?
It's a flat fee.
What is that fee?
Right off the top of my head, is it in there? I can't remember exactly.
Page three of that agreement, I believe, has some, Tracy Eric, I'm sorry, County Attorney's Office. I think page three has some of the project fees contained with that, within that agreement.
So we pay them, they prepare different reports, so on the quarterly, we pay them $3,785, and then they do some special reports for us that range between $3,400 and $23,000. The $23,000 one is done every other year, and that's the full actuarial study of the pension.
So in 2016, or if that's not a complete year, 2015, could you tell us what we paid Silverstone to provide these services?
I think we usually put in the budget approximately $50,000.
And on H, we have the reappointment of Commissioner Chris Rogers to the Nebraska Association of County Officials Board of Directors. You've heard me talk before about how long people have served on boards, and I would like to know, I think this is Commissioner Borgerson's motion, how long Commissioner Rogers has served on the NACO board?
You get three, two, three-year terms, and this is his third, second.
And I know that Commissioner Morgan shares with me a keen interest in term limits, and so that's the only reason that I come back to these when we talk about appointments and reappointments. On item K, resolution to approve an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska for the stop-loss coverage for the county self-funded group medical plan, $18.90 per employee per month, $494,651 annual premium. This, I believe, is part of the switch-over from United Healthcare to Blue Cross Blue Shield that the board approved earlier in the year that I objected to and voted against. I'm going to object and vote against this as well. If we've had any indication of how our experience with Blue Cross is going to go, I would just remind you of a couple of things. First of all, we received faulty information from our consultant, Aon, in the preparation of those bids, and we've never received a satisfactory explanation of how that happened. The information that did come out ultimately indicated that Blue Cross Blue Shield will cost us more, and we will receive less service for our employees. In the last two days, in the Omaha World Herald, there have been articles on Blue Cross Blue Shield, one indicating that they were refusing to pay agents' commissions on Affordable Care Act policies in an attempt probably to pull out of the Affordable Care Act market entirely, and today that they were asking for pre-approval of people who want to visit hospitals that are covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's just the tip of the iceberg, and I just point this out, I'm going to vote against this, item, that we are going to receive less service at higher pay based on faulty information. This was a bad decision, and it's going to be a gift that keeps on taking.
Commissioner Morgan?
Kavanaugh, I just want to make one thing clear. I know you referred to it a number of times on term limits. First of all, I really support Chris Rogers continuing to be on NACO totally, and feel that he's done a great service for us, and I thank him for that. My term limits is more on commissioners, elected officials, as the state senators have. I would prefer the state senators have three terms, honestly, rather than two, because of having served and knowing what it takes down there to get acquainted and working on all the matters they work on. And my thought was on the county commissioners, and I'd be the first to make that motion if there was support, and I know there is not, to have term limits. It would be grandfathered in, so anyone here now could serve the two or three terms if that was the will of this board. But as far as these other committees, the Fair Board and other boards that Commissioner Kraft's worked on, I think we're fortunate to have the people that want to serve on these boards, and they have a knowledge, they do a great job, and there are not a lot of people wanting to serve on some of those boards, and I think Commissioner Kraft would agree with me on that. So I just want to state again my support of Chris Rogers to continue on that, and I want to be clear on where I stand concerning term limits.
Teresa?
Thank you, Commissioner. Tracy Eric, County Attorney's Office. I just wanted to point out to the board with regards to F, which is the Aristotle agreement. There are a couple of blanks in the, in the agreement. None of them are, all of them are easily filled in, but I wanted to let you know that that information had been filled in with the county clerk. The first is on the front page. The custodian of the service agreement is US Bank. That has been filled in on that agreement. US Bank, excuse me, US Bank. I call it US Bank. US Bank, thank you for the correction. And then also on page 10, I believe, the contact information for the county will be the CFO, Joe Lorenz. That has been filled in. And then lastly, on the schedule, Exhibit B, the fee schedule, there was a checkbox that needed to be checked, and it is the first checkbox on that page, and that has also been checked on all the copies. I simply wanted the board to be aware of those fill-ins that had been, had been taken care of.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I support term limits for county commissioners after eight four-year terms. And, oh, I didn't mean to say that. Maybe after I finish my term. There's something to be said, you know, I have, I have mixed emotions about that, because when I look at Congress, I'd like them to serve two months, you know, to be gone every two months. But on the other hand, you know, we're really, we're really looking at, you know, one of the ways that term limits are enacted is through elections, and I've been on the other, on the other side of that club, once anyway. And so I understand that, you know, the people are in charge of this, and if they don't like what we do, we'll be the first to know it. And so I think it's, there's some merit to term limits, but it also kind of interferes with how people, you know, if they like what someone's doing, to keep them there and so forth. I mean, we're losing some really terrific state senators. I know you agree with me. So, and some bad ones are going, in my opinion. So, I mean, it's kind of a mixed blessing. So enough said about that. There's some merits to one side and not to the other. As for, excuse me, Chris Rogers serving on NACO, we all have a stake in what happens with the state legislature, of course, and NACO is really the voice, of course, for the entire state, and lots of times, there's disagreements between the line offices and the commissioners and so forth. But if there's anyone who has ever been really, really qualified to serve, it's Chris. And when I was serving, I was very qualified, of course, too, in my opinion, but Claire, please. But anyhow, so, but what, what I did is I asked the chair to serve, and in a timely manner, so that it wasn't at the last minute. And so she did agree to do that, which was, I was very grateful, and I really enjoyed that experience, that people on NACO from around the state are just involved, they're a lot of fun, good people, made some incredibly good friends, way out in the Panhandle, very strong conservative Republicans I just really still get along with and communicate with. One of them was elected a state senator, which I'm happy about, Senator-elect Erdman. So anyhow, I guess I just say that. I understand what you're saying about, but I guess what I would suggest is if I want to move around or do something, I put my two cents in early, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. You know, I tried for years to get on the building commission, and that never happened, and finally did. So I'm not concerned about it. And as for Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, in my estimation, they're, they're a company, first of all, they're right here in town. I feel very comfortable with them. I'm, United Healthcare has a local presence as well, but Blue Cross Blue Shield, in my estimation, it's not a slogan, but I think they do put the patients first, and my experience with them has always been excellent. And I think a lot of these responses that you're seeing, if I could offer a suggestion or an explanation, I think it's because of the constant pressure on unraveling the Affordable Care Act, that there's incredible pressure to force insurance companies into situations where they can't be profitable, so they'll pull out, which will lead to the failure of Obamacare. That's my assessment. I hope it's not totally based on politics, but I have a feeling it is. So I think that's a lot of the things that we're seeing. As far as the headline in today's paper, I think Blue Cross Blue Shield's just doing what other insurance companies do, and I'm not alarmed by it, but I understand your concern, and I respect it. But I'll be voting for Blue Cross Blue Shield's continued operations. I know that they'll do a good job, and they're just a good company, so. And I know you're not saying they're not a bad company, but you have your reservations, and you're entitled to them. I respect them.
With that, there's been a request to pull item K from the motion, so if the motion-maker and the seconder agrees for the approval of the consent minus K.
Yeah, the motion was by Commissioner Boyle, and the second was by Commissioner Kraft.
I'll agree to do that.
Okay, please vote.
On K?
No, on the, everything else but K. And now I need a motion for K.
So both.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Give us one moment, please.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd like to move to amend that motion not to approve K. For the reasons I stated before, you know, this decision is based on bad information that we received from our consultant. That information was not corrected in a timely fashion, and no adequate explanation as to why that information was wrong was given to us. The information went to the heart of this agreement relative to the cost of Blue Cross versus our current healthcare provider, United Healthcare, and this agreement consequently will cost us more, not less, and will provide less service, not more, to our employees. So I'd ask that this agreement not be approved, that we go back to discussing the bid process and why it was so flawed, and that we reconsider this motion. I appreciate everybody's comments and concern on this, and I just wanted to make the record clear that I don't agree with this decision. I think it's going to cost us, and it's going to cost our employees.
There is a motion and a second to approve K. Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report as presented. If there's no other comments. Under administrative, please note there's a committee meeting, or the minutes of the committee meeting, November 22. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just briefly, in the new year, on January 24, the Administrative Service Committee is scheduled to hold a hearing. A couple of things will be considered at that time. The Douglas County Assessor Registered Deeds will present a proposal relative to their space needs, and we'll get an update from Public Property on the progress that we're making on our public safety, public safety bond issue implementation on the construction schedule. That will be immediately following the county board, regularly scheduled county board meeting on January 24, 2017.
Child, huh?
27.
24. 24, 2017.
The child and youth, there's one item, approval of an agreement with Father Flanagan Boys Home for Psychiatric Services at the Youth Center.
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Boyle made the motion. Commissioner Rogers seconded. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes.
There's one item under Community Services, execute the interlocal for collection of delinquent taxes, taxes through court proceedings and furtherance of returning vacant, abandoned, and taxed delinquent properties to productive use as requested by the Community Services Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Give us one moment, please.
One brief comment on that.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to commend Tim Dolan, who was at that meeting, for providing us with the addendum information. It was clear and concise and adequately addressed our concerns expressed at that meeting, so, thanks.
Teresa?
Thank you, Commissioner. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I also wanted to just make the board aware, before you vote, that there is a blank in this agreement as well on the front page. It's just the effective date, and it's going to be today's date. That's been filled in. And then also on paragraph six, again, effective date, today's date, and the agreement will terminate if it expires in 10 years, November 30th of 2026. There is the ability to terminate, obviously, before that, but I just wanted the board to be aware of those fill-ins.
Any further questions or comments?
Can you provide us when it's executed? Tim, can you provide us just a final copy when it's executed with dates and everything in it? Just provide us a final copy when it's executed with dates and everything.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. We've had a lot of meetings on this particular topic, and I'm still not feeling like I fully understand the implications of what is happening here, but there is a, I'm missing a comfort level for my constituents from outside the city of Omaha, which is about a third of my district, that we are turning over control of these proceedings to an entity completely within the city. And so, you'll have properties out at Kingslake or whatever that are being impacted by, by the city of Omaha, and nobody out there has any voice in the process. It is that concern, I will be voting no on this, and it is because of that concern. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Rogers?
I definitely feel Commissioner Duda's piece on it, and we've talked about it, and, you know, he needs to feel comfortable in his gut with it, and I understand. I just want to kind of confirm to him that he, they'll still have the representation, because the LRC is still functioning as it is. This is just some of the back legal functions that happen with it. And what it will save us is that since the county attorney's office is not filing, we won't pay the fee, so it'll save us some money in that respect, and it'll also save some time. But the representation piece, the land bank doesn't touch any of that to some degree. The LRC still does the function, which we have, the representation piece. Is that fair? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and just for the record, I too share, which we voiced in the committee, the concerns that I shared, the same as Commissioner Duda, and so I'll be voting no as well. Please vote. Next is the Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, and then the legislative issues. This is our agenda that was, everybody looked at it, decided which ones were kind of our top ones that we were going to work on. I did have one question, though, for Commissioner Kraft, and that was, he made a comment last week or the week before about changing up one of ours that would, that one of our priorities would be to work on the all mail-in elections versus one of these. And so, one, like number three on ours, the second set of threes, is the legislation to expand county ordinances making authority and grant home rule authority. Would you like the mail-in replaced there, and we can just move three? Still be in our package, but it won't be one of the priorities.
Jim, may I answer? Your light's on first, but may I answer her?
Sure.
Okay. I prefer that we add it as a separate item instead of entwining it in the other one. I'm afraid if, because we've presented before the ordinance capacity, and I believe it'll just be lost in the discussion of that.
No, we would wipe out, we would take three off and move it down on our list, and then the mail-in would be.
Oh, yes. Okay, that, yes, yes. So, replace it and move it.
Could I give you a compromise on that, since that was mine? I would suggest to you, I mean, I would change it totally and propose that you change that to a study, if that's possible, instead of a full-blown act. If, if we could change that proposal to, that they would, that we request a study for that.
The study for the mail-in or the study for?
The study for the ordinance piece.
Or ordinance piece? Oh.
If we would, and I would be able to support it to change that to a study, which hopefully is less controversial and should be an easy ask, and that we could full-throated legally go after the vote by mail.
Okay. So, we would just add it as an item on our priority list?
Yes.
And then change item three to a study rather than a full-blown legislative bill? Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to note in number four, the Turk proposals, we've had a full hearing on this in the committee, and ongoing meetings with Senator McCallister, Senator Craighead, and others to discuss proposed legislation in this arena. I want to say that I've been in discussions directly with Senator McCallister regarding the fourth item there, required Turk to grant a rehearing if requested on any decision or order made by the commission, which was something that they did not grant us in our most recent Turk appeal. This would take away their ability to deny an automatic rehearing on an appeal. The importance of that, as you know, is that it allows us to introduce additional evidence. Not that it would necessarily change Turk's decision, but it would enhance the record that we take up to appeal, and would be of benefit to us in case we wanted to add additional evidence after the initial hearing. I believe that's going to be a bill. I don't know about all the rest of these, and, you know, just in general, as legislation goes, and Senator, or Commissioner, former Senator Morgan knows this, this is a pretty robust list of proposals, and it would probably be wise to leave it to the discretion of our legislative representatives to pick and choose what they actually are going to introduce. I would be surprised if each and every one of these became, became a bill, but rather than micromanage their day-to-day affairs on our behalf, in the legislature, I would, I would say that these are things that we suggest that they try to achieve, recognizing that the entirety of this list has little chance of actually being enacted in this legislative session.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I'd kind of like to take a little bit of a different approach to what's been talked about. I think Commissioner Rogers has made a really terrific suggestion in home rule charter status for counties. It's something that we really, really need, because without it, we're constantly dragged into spending property tax dollars for things that we think, you know, if we had the authority, we could save some money, if we had the authority to finesse some, some of the statutes and had the authority to do it. What I'd like to do is make the home rule status bill a priority and include a one-liner in there, including voting by mail if approved by the county board after a study. Kind of, I mean, you know, we're not going to just rush in, yeah, we're going to do it. And I think, and I don't think we should, I think we should look into it, but it can also be presented as a, as a saving of tax dollars, because we have to rent all the polling places, we have to pay rent, it's minimal, we do have to deliver equipment, we have to pay the poll workers, and all that sort of thing. And as we know, we had a lawsuit recently where someone was injured when a chair collapsed at one of the churches. The other thing, in talking to the election commissioner, he's told me that because of security matters and concerns, many schools are backing out, and churches are not real happy about it either. And I don't know if you know this or not, but I believe churches have been banned from having bake sales because of public safety kind of things, you know? Who knows what's in the peanut butter sandwich, you know, I don't know, peanut butter, whatever. So, I mean, they're having trouble, they can't even have bake sales, apparently. So, things have kind of come apart since, oh, I don't know, 110 years ago, when I was in the election office. So, but I think this is just a move that's progressing. So many small counties have the right and the ability. There's school bond elections that are almost, I believe, almost routinely conducted by mail. And I, I think we ought to try to go with the home rule charter with a one-liner in there, that the county board, one of the, one of the perks of having that authority is to decide whether or not we want to have elections as they've been held. The other thing, too, that I don't want to overlook, is that some people do like to vote in person, and, I mean, I've talked to people who don't vote by mail, because they like to go and cast their vote, they really feel like it. Well, we could have a couple of sites in the city, maybe the public library downtown, maybe a library out in Millard. Did you hear me, Mary Ann? Anyway, a library out in Millard where we could have voting places. And if we can get rid of rotation on the ballots, that would cut a tremendous cost, you know? I'll get on my high horse very quickly. Rotation was put into place because the voting public was even more illiterate than, than today. People, I mean that in a friendly way, because people are accused of being dumb if they vote the opposite way, of course. But anyway, and so what happened was people would, there'd be chain voting, where you'd be given a ballot, and you'd tell the sheriff's deputy there to bring out ballot number five, because there were several ballots. Bring it out unmarked, you'd put it in your pocket, but you put the other ones in the box yourself. And then we'd give it to Commissioner Kavanaugh, we'd mark Joe Doakes for county treasurer, and it would bring back the blank one, and it would start chain voting. And that's why we can't put our ballots in the box anymore. So, a lot of antiquated laws that are operating here, it's time we step up to the plate. The election commissioner's on our side, we've got some, I think, good progressive Secretary of State who can maybe see some merit in this. I think we ought to go for broke and go for home rule charter and include this as one of the things we can do, as an option.
Commissioner Duda?
Interesting thought, but I'm skeptical that we will ever get any, any kind of home rule charter. And I, I'm a big fan of Commissioner Rogers and all the work he's done with NACO and everything, and I don't want to get in his way of pursuing some of these things, but there's no separation of power in county government. I mean, everybody that has legislative ability, city council, legislature, there's a, there's somebody else, a separation of powers, the governor, the mayor, somebody else that can veto it. There's nobody that can veto anything we do. I'm skeptical that anybody would ever give any more authority. And therefore, I think to link the mail-in elections with, with us having home rule charter, I think the mail-in elections have a good future. I think they make sense. And, and I hope that we continue to make progress working more in that direction. I think that is a much more cost-effective way to conduct an election, and I'd like to see that stand on its own merits. I fear tying it to home rule charter or something will, they'll both get lost, would be my fear. So, I think they should be separate, freestanding issues.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I appreciate what Commissioner Boyle said in his long years of experience in election laws unparalleled. I, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Rogers' mail-in ballot initiative. Anything, anything that we do to increase voter participation in voting is a good thing, and I think mail-in ballots would increase that. But I, I agree with Commissioner Duda's read on, you know, tying it to home rule charter, which, the merits aside, probably has a difficult road to hoe getting passed in a legislature. And if we tie our vote-by-mail proposal to that, I think we maybe impair the chances of getting vote-by-mail. And so, I don't know if it makes much difference how we word this, whether it's in that support line, or it's in a separate support line, but I would hope that we would instruct, again, our legislative representatives when they go to Lincoln, to try to get vote-by-mail in one form or another, whether it's in a separate bill, whether it's an amendment to another bill. But if we're doing them in the context of the home rule charter, I mean, I don't see the direct connection anyhow, because I think if we're asking vote-by-mail, aren't we asking vote-by-mail for every registered Nebraskan? Or are we just asking for vote-by-mail for people living in Douglas County? I don't know that we'd have a better chance having it just for Douglas County. I think voting procedures are statewide, uniform across the state. Isn't that correct, Commissioner Boyle?
Well, no. Ah.
Thank you. There are counties now that have all vote-by-mail.
Oh, there are?
Yeah. And they just absolutely, you know, Arthur County or wherever it is, all these places, there are several small counties that have no polling places at all. It's all mandated by vote-by-mail, and it has been that way for several years in Nebraska.
Well, then, couldn't we follow their model and implement vote-by-mail ourselves?
Well, of course, we do have vote-by-mail. Ann and I use it all the time, but the vote-by-mail in some of those, in those counties that I don't know all the names, but they are, there's no option. It's all vote-by-mail. And so, I, I think in that statute, you know, if you want to go another route, we could add counties of a, of a certain population, you know, that sort of thing. And, but again, I don't know that, frankly, I think there's too much fear of corruption, and there's too much anti-Omaha sentiment that say, we're not going, we're not going to let them do this. They're up to something, you know? So, I, I mean, I just don't think that we would get it. I, I was at a hearing one time with Chris, and I think I shocked him no end. The two of us are in with a whole slew, about 300 rural senators, or, excuse me, commissioners. And something was said, and I just, you know how I am. So, I stood up and I said, I've got a question for everybody here. Why do you hate us? And a couple of people said, we're carrying the weight for you. We pay for everything. I mean, the concept, I mean, Chris kind of, you know, anyhow. I mean, really, I said, why do you hate us? And then we start conversations. It's, so, I mean, there's a lot of subtle things that go on, as you well know. So, I don't know, I just like to see us have the right to do it. I think it would save us a lot of money. I think it would just be much more efficient. I think it makes such great sense. I just don't know. If the smaller counties can do it, what's the difference? Just numbers.
So, if I'm following you, we can already do this if we want to?
Well, no, we can't.
Okay.
Statute allows a budget of $10,000.
The Secretary of State is the, is the gatekeeper, and he won't allow it.
Okay, so the vote-by-mail option that we currently enjoy, that you indicated that you use?
Oh, yeah. That's, we, we can do that, but it's not, it's not mandatory. In some counties in Nebraska, that's mandatory.
So, the proposal, Commissioner Rogers, that you're proposing is that we have mandatory vote-by-mail or optional vote-by-mail, or what is the exact nature of that?
And, no, my, my mind was to clear the way for Commissioner Kraft, because like you said, so much could come through the vessel. And so, my, but to go on and knock myself off the list here, Commissioner, to Commissioner Duda's piece, there are a few other counties that do it without a presiding head, but my point with home rules played a long game, because I don't think we're going to be the ones to, to win it. I think Lancaster County is going to be the one to win it for us, and this is my rationale, because every year, they get closer, and they ask to be inched up out of things that their population inches them up of. Civil service, this, that. And they don't want to be us. So, you know, they are going to be the biggest champions for making us an island out of ourselves. And I don't think we get everything, but I think there's some things that even in thinking that through when the chair read it, we won't get it this year. So, I think the study is in doing it a logical read and just more there, but I think during the study, there's some other things that are out there that I think, even the conversation at the NACO piece this weekend, there were some discussions that... at the NACO piece this weekend, there were some discussions that, you know, quite frankly, you know, when I heard President Bob Post talk, some of the revelations that he talked about that he went through in the presidency, you know, I think some of the rural people could be our biggest champions in helping us get there if we make the case good enough. Because we're not them, they understand that, and there's some things that we deal with special from them. And I think, you know, we may not get it all, but I think there's some legitimate acts based on some of the criminal justice stuff in the jails, which we don't, that ours is a whole nother level, that we may be able to ask for some specific pieces. So, my home rule request is some specific places that I think we may be able to go. And I think that, you know, if we play it right, we may have some allies out west with a couple of people coming into the presidency that they may help us get there.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So, in the context of this resolution, Commissioner Borgerson, the vote-by-mail proposal would be incorporated in the home rule county proposal, is that correct?
No, we would make it a number, a separate number, and just make it five, and just say, "Support mail-in ballot elections."
That's what we would say, okay.
And just before I turn it over to Commissioner Craft, a couple of years ago, I'd had a conversation with Secretary Gale, and he is, he has looked at this and has strategically wanting to move in that direction, and I think it's probably, we'll probably see some action out of that office and with the election commissioners. And so, doing something with this this year would probably be a good timing for us to do it, but it has been consistently looked at by the secretary of state. Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and I will reiterate or reinforce that it should be standalone.
It should be Douglas County only?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, free from the whole.
A standalone item on our legislative agenda. And it could be with a vote, statewide with a vote of the county board. But we can just, you know, since going into the legislature is like making sausages, we say, just supporting it is good enough for right now. And those of, you know, who know the back and forth between Commissioner Boyle and I, there's nothing I enjoy more than taking the wind out of his sails.
You and a few others.
So, digital presses have changed the way we do printing. And the rotational, when I did mellings with my business and in campaigns, addressing it to each individual, it was no more expensive than doing a printing that said, "Dear friend." The digital presses are so fast and so good that programming it to do a rotational should not really add to the expenses.
Can I respond?
No.
Okay.
Oh, plus veto power, thank you. Well, I have the floor.
Yeah, you got vetoed. He's vetoed my speaking, so.
Yeah. We can go with the home rule charter and just assign me the veto power.
Commissioner Duda?
Sounds like that won't go anywhere.
Good discussion. I would hope that on the mail-in that we at least start by saying Douglas County only, just so you don't have 92 counties saying, "What are they up to now?" And if other counties want to join on, fine, but all I'm interested in is the ability to do it within Douglas County. We've done small elections, they've gone very well. Obviously, we're not going to do anything without, I mean, it's going to be in conjunction with our election commissioner, but I would like to have the authority that if Douglas County wants to do an election completely by mail-in, we have the authority to make that decision.
And I could double-check with Secretary Gale to see where he is on his process, to see if it's going to be a statewide effort so we know, but for now, we'll leave it on ours, just support the mail-in. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, excuse me, the, my concern about rotation is not the cost of it because Commissioner Craft is absolutely correct. It is very inexpensive. But if the seven of us walk into the election commissioner's office at 114th and France Avenue, if we go out there and try to vote, each one of us gets a different ballot. I mean, the names are at the top are different, not necessarily the presidential, I think that's locked in, but other offices down below rotate. And so, what happens is the person for Metro Community College is, well, first of all, a different district, could be. I mean, each ballot is so complicated that sometimes they're split, your neighbors across the street vote for somebody else. I mean, it's really unbelievable. But what this rotation causes is the election commissioner not being able to just hand out a ballot to a voter who comes in. Remember, rotation was put in because voters truly were illiterate, and they were told to vote for the third person. Well, by rotating the names, they were voting for the wrong person. So, that's why rotation's in place, so that people who were uneducated couldn't be paid to vote for whoever, and they couldn't read names. I mean, it was just, it was one of those things. So, rotation is antiquated, you know, it surely, I think it really shows, if anybody really believes that voters go in and vote for the top name on every candidacy, that is just unbelievable, that does not happen. So, people are very selective, it's very obvious that we have an intelligent voting group of people, and they look for the people they want to vote for. And so, whether they're at the top or whether they're at the bottom makes no difference. But it's a very expensive process to rotate because we have 300 and some precincts, and every one of those ballots is supposed to be different. And that's the cost. Because if we could have a uniform ballot, you know, we could have people voting at, I don't know, four or five or six or seven or eight or nine or 10 places in the county because they'd all get the same ballot, and it'd be a lot more efficient.
Commissioner Craft?
I have so much I'd like to say, but I don't think we have enough time on this issue.
Well, take me to lunch and we'll talk.
If you were mine, yes. Okay. Yeah. The, we may as well just start, if you want, one ballot, it's not going to change anything, no matter where you vote, because of the way they can print them digitally nowadays. If you want these individual ballots, you're going to have to have a computerized printer.
I don't want them.
I'm talking about just 10 places to go. You type in your address, it spits out a ballot.
No, it doesn't do that, we don't want to do that.
Okay. Then I'm having trouble deciphering what you want.
You and I will talk.
Okay, thank you.
Spare the board.
We'll spare everybody.
Spare the board.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have our legislative agenda with a couple of changes, the one being on item three, we're changing it to a study, and that's dealing with the home rule charter. And then we're adding support for all mail-in elections as number five. Now, keep in mind, we understand that throughout this process, there's going to be other legislation that will have to come before us, sometimes very quickly, to either oppose or support or whatever, so, but this is ours because in the past, it's been asked for us to show what some of our legislative initiative priorities are. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
The actual words that we're using, vote-by-mail, what are those actual words?
We're adding number five that says, "Support all mail-in elections." We will most likely bring that back after I have a conversation with Secretary Gale to decide whether it's going to be a statewide or just a Douglas County.
We're remending number three?
To study.
Okay.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes.
We do have need for an executive session for litigation, but please note that this is our last scheduled meeting for December this year, and that our first one will be January 10th, 2017. With that, on behalf of the board, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays, and Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa, and all of the joys of the season. And enjoy your families and friends during this time, and we'll see you again next year.
Thanks.
But we do need a motion to go into a second session for litigation.
So move.
Commissioner Boyle and reluctantly Commissioner Duda with the second.
Motion passes.
Got the motion and the second?